Or if you prefer, the audio, there's an audio call in number with an associated meeting ID. Uh, and on the top of the agenda as well is another option. Uh, we'll call to order. So Lisa, let's confirm we have a quorum, please.
Alan.
President.
Murphy.
Present.
Peterson.
Here.
Ratcliffe.
Here.
Valencia.
Present.
Vanderwoldy.
Here.
And Williams.
Present. Uh, we have a quorum. The agenda was properly posted and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So please find a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Item four is public appearances, Publix opportunity to speak. Uh, we do have a um, opportunity regarding the budget, uh, bit further down on the agenda, but if there's anyone from the public who want to speak on other items, uh, please share your name, your address, so we can capture that for public record. And hold your comments to no more than three minutes so that we can um, get everyone who would like to speak uh, on. So with that, I'll pause. And again, if you would like to speak, uh, please find your mute button.
Carrie, did you want to go now?
Sure. Uh, you know, sorry, I didn't have audio and I couldn't figure out why. And I realized I had a bad setting from a different program. Sorry. Um, I'm Carrie Robbins. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Girl Scout Troop 1048, which is a Girl Scout troop in Cottage Grove. Um, I am a longtime leader of the troop, um, nine years, but I also invited one of our Girl Scouts to join me tonight named Lucy. And Lucy's on the call tonight, um, as a representative of the troop who wanted to speak to item number seven on your agenda tonight, which is your consideration of adding youth members to public committees. Um, our troop has been actively engaged in community service. And one of the goals that the students have as they move into high school is to continue to identify ways that they can serve in the community. And um, this past three years, a project that we completed that was recognized with a silver award was related to diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives. And we know that there's a committee with that focus in Cottage Grove. Um, that would have aligned really nicely with the work that the girls were doing. And also, as they move into high school, they'll be looking for additional projects that might also align with some of the work of your committees. So if there's interest on any of your committees to adding a teen member, um, we wanted to register in support of that. And to um, at answer any questions you might have or um, comments, I wanted to turn it over to Lucy to introduce herself. And to explain why she thinks that having teenagers and high school students as part of your committees might be a good thing. Lucy, if you're willing to talk.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Lucy. I'm a freshman at MG. And I think it would be very beneficial to have a high school student on your board. As you would get a whole new perspective on different issues that you're handling. And they would also be able to experience um, the effects of the problem you're handling for longer than say you were. And being able to have them kind of like play a role in that. And then having everybody in the high school community benefit from it is, for me at least, was very impactful.
I think that's all we were planning to contribute tonight, but we wanted to thank you for the opportunity to come and and give a public comment just in general to say, um, as a longtime community member myself, I know that it's been really helpful to me to run ideas past the girls in my Girl Scout troop and in other organizations and sports that my children have been involved in over the years. And I have always found their perspectives really useful when developing programming and activities. Um, as sometimes my ideas of things I think are awesome are not going to fly with them. So if there are opportunities for you to include uh, youth on your committees, I just think it'd be really helpful in shaping the future direction of your work. Thanks for the chance to speak tonight.
All right. Thanks, Carrie, and thanks Lucy for sharing your thoughts. Appreciate that. Um, anyone else uh, from the public want to speak? All right, we'll move on then. Next item is to discuss and consider our meeting minutes from our regular board meeting from November fifteenth. And our budget workshop uh, on the sixteenth of November. The meeting minutes were in a packet. Any uh, edits or uh, motion of consideration for approval?
A motion to approve the minutes of the regular village board meeting that we had on the fifteenth. And the budget workshop on November sixteenth, uh, minutes as they were posted in the feedback.
Second.
All right. Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Troy. Any further discussion? Having heard none then, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Uh, next, uh, we will, we'll open up a public hearing. Uh, this is a public hearing session for interest from citizens for our 2022 proposed budget for the village of Cottage Grove. Uh, so we're opening that up for anybody who would like to speak. Uh, Lisa, did we get any submittals uh, from public to speak?
We did not.
All right. Thank you. Um, with that, I think I'll turn it over to Matt to give a, a brief summary and then uh, see if anybody wants to jump in from the public.
All right. Thank you, John. Uh, so a brief overview of, of the budget, just from a, a high level, and then I'll just do a, a summary of, of um, the initiatives that, that we have in both uh, through our operations and capital budgets. The approved financial management plan, uh, following that process, we were looking at potentially upwards of about a 10% increase in the um, tax levy. And uh, after the, the board's workshop, that was reduced to about 7%. And ultimately, the impact of that 7% increase to the levy equates to about a 5% increase to the tax rate. Um, and, and using a, a $300,000 house as an example, that would be about a $95 increase. Um, on the, a $300,000 house from last year to this year in taxes, if this budget's approved, um, as is. Um, operationally, the, the highlights um, in, include four new full-time uh, positions being added to our police officers. One is a Public Works Operations Manager. And one is a Communications and Marketing Manager. Um, some of the moving on to the capital side of things with uh, maintenance of our, our vehicle fleet, there are kind of three, three key items there. Um, we're replacing engine three at the fire department. We're replacing a police department squad car. And then we have final payment towards a new Deer Grove VMS ambulance. As far as uh, street improvements for next year, we're planning to um, improve West Oak Street. Uh, Taylor and Ridge Road are have a scheduled reconstruction. Clark and Grove Street have um, various improvements that are planned as well as the uh, final phase on County N for the bike path project. And then there's some uh, some other miscellaneous urbanization improvements um, to County N. And then mov- moving on to parks, we're a- adding some new amenities in Community Park. There's uh, some pickleball courts that are being added as well as a playground replacement. Baccan Park is planned to add a, a skate park and um, bike track, pump track. And Red Hawk Park in West Lawn, fourth addition, has its final phase of, of completion and, and the highlight there is a um, inline skating rink, which also can double as a ice skating rink. So th- those are kind of, I know I'm leaving out various other things, but those are kind of the, the big ticket items in the, in the planned budget for 2022 and what's, what's part of the, um, as part of the levy that's in front of the board as a resolution tonight. That's all I have, John. Happy to take questions or um, see if there's anyone else from the public on.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Again, uh, just reminding public, uh, anybody would, would like to speak, uh, find the mute button, please share your name. And your address and hold your comments to no more than three minutes in case we have a number of people would like to speak. So with that, I will uh, be quiet for a moment and let anybody jump in from the public who want us to speak specifically about the proposed 2022 budget um, for the village. All right, if uh, no one wants to chime in, that's, that's fine. Uh, at this time, then we'll close the public uh, hearing portion of this. And turn it over to the board to have a discussion regarding, uh, discuss and consider resolution 2021 dash oh eight. Uh, resolution adopting the 2022 budget and authorizing the clerk to levy taxes. So there's a, there's the memo in the packet, the resolution, and the uh, full narrative as well in, in a packet for board members. Any comments or regarding this from the board?
I just wanted to note that I have talked to a couple of people who were, um, who are very interested in a um, ice, ice skating rink in our community. Um, but when I told them that Red Hawk Park would have an inline hockey rink um, eh, next year being built, and then that could be used for ice skating in the winter, they were very excited. So um, I think that's a really good addition to our park system.
All right. Thanks, Melissa. Any other comments, questions from board members? Otherwise, this is a discuss and consider.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution 2021 dash oh eight, adopting the 2022 budget and authorizing the clerk to levy taxes.
Tugget.
All right. Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, David. Uh, any further discussion? Having heard none then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right. Then we'll move down to unfinished business. And in this case, it is as teed up by uh, Carrie and Lucy, Lucy, excuse me. Um, this is discuss and consider a youth representative for the Parks and Recreation Forestry Committee and Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. Melissa has a memo in the packet, and then there's some uh, references there as well. I don't know, Melissa, if you want to touch on uh, your, your memo or anything?
Yes, thank you. Um, so the, this uh, youth representatives on committees was discussed at Parks and Recreation. And at our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committees. Um, and eh, at DEI, it went over really well. There was um, a lot of support for it there. And um, Heidi, can you let us know what Parks thought of it?
So Parks was really excited to involve uh, youth, um, kind of bring in um, you know, their perspective to our park planning process and thought it would be really valuable. Um, the committee members were very supportive of it.
Thanks, Heidi. So when um, after those meetings, then Sarah and I kind of looked at the, our current ordinances and the resolution that we um, approved to form the DEI committee. And it looks like currently, we could have youth members on the DEI committee because at the village level, we don't have a limit on um, and a, a minimum age limit. So we wanted to define what youth meant then. Um, so we figured ages 14 to 17 would be ninth through um, 12th grades. The um, looked at other communities and their um, DEI committees also had youth members on where it wasn't specified an age. It was just a student had applied and they were like, oh, that's a good idea. So a student was appointed to the, their DEI committee. Um, some school boards have uh, like the Madison Metro School District has a very uh, very lengthy policy on student school board representatives, but that's for the school board itself, not for committees specifically. Um, so we looked at then our Parks, Recreation and Forestry Committee ordinance. And currently, we have five members total on there. And in order to make room for uh, youth representatives, we would have to amend the ordinance to be able to include two youth members. That would have uh, voting capacity, I guess, rather than just being on the committee to actually be involved and have a say in what's um, goes into the parks. So we'd have to amend the ordinance. Um, and we checked with Larry and, or Rick got back to us and he indicated that um, to, we just have to amend the ordinance and we can write it where it's would only go for a year or two if we wanted to just have it be a brief um, time so that we could determine the factiveness of having a youth member. Or um, um, like that would be the way to go about it. So after, I have the recommendations in the memo. Um, that, that we do amend the ordinance and hopefully staff, um, Rick and Larry can help with the language for that. We were, Sarah and I had discussed that if we added two youth representatives to the Parks ordinance. So there'd be a total of seven members. If for some reason those, and this is what I hadn't checked with Rick about, is if those two youth members weren't um, appointed right away, if we could write it such that it wouldn't count towards quorum. Um, and I was, I think I kind of put that in my email, Rick, but I wasn't sure if um, if I had specifically or not. Is that something that you, so like if there's only five members on there, five, you'd only need three people for quorum. But if we rewrote the ordinance to include two youth members and they weren't appointed right away, or there was only one appointed, would that count against quorum? Or make us where if, you know, so you'd have to have four members to make quorum if there's seven people on a committee?
Yeah, so we can definitely structure the ordinance in that way. I mean, essentially, it's a committee, so we get to say what the makeup of the committee is and when it's full or when it's not full. So we can sort of have these, you know, floating positions, I guess, if you want to call them that, where it only counts to the quorum if the position's filled. Otherwise, you know, if we've just got a regular um, three members or five members, then it would be, that's your quorum. But um, since it's just a, a committee that the village creates, we've got a lot of flexibility in how we go about it.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you for that. Um, so that uh, my recommendation would be to, for us to update or amend our ordinance to allow for two youth members on the Parks and Rec um, committee. Um, to have equal voting power as other committee members. I think with the, the DEI committee, we can just, um, because there are a couple of openings, I think we just open it up to student members. We've, we left ourselves a lot of flexibility in our resolution. We can reach out to the high school and other community organizations, such as the Girl Scouts, as you heard tonight, that they're interested in this. And um, then we just need to also update our application um, for appointment to committee, which I included a draft in there as well for the youth spot on the Parks and the DEI committee. So, thank you for uh, John, for letting me have a little leeway to ask those questions and hopefully made it a little bit more clear for everybody.
All right. Any questions for Melissa or Rick uh, regarding this? I think it's a, as we talked about as a board already, is a great idea to uh, pull in some younger members with the, a different side of the view of the world. Um, and uh, what a great spots, couple spots to start that in DEI and Parks. Um, so with that, uh, any member, any board members have any questions? Again, this is a discuss and consider.
I'll move to approve um, having youth representatives at the Parks and Rec and Forestry Committee and the DEI In- Inclusion Committee. Um, and take the steps as proposed by trustee Ratcliffe.
Thank you, Sarah. Thanks, Paul. Any further discussion?
Actually, I got a comment or I think back from maybe a, the last meeting or two meetings ago. I unfortunately just made a mental note that I was going to reach out to Dan Olson. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of capacity of my brain to re, have remembered to reach out to him. I did uh, put it in my calendar here to give him a holler tomorrow. Um, Melissa, how would you foresee that, you know, in terms of are we eventually going to have some kind of link that um, you know, that would encourage or, you know, at that level of engagement, uh, that we can provide the school district or what would you see as the next step with that? Or just connect him to you or? And Dan's usually pretty good about getting back to me right away. So I'm sure I'm like, he'll give, he'll give a call back.
Um, I think that if we just let it be known that we are looking for mem- youth members, youth representatives to be on these two committees with the application. Um, and if more is needed, um, like if it, I don't know if it would be, could be announced as part of the um, social studies or um, those types of classes eh, at the high school. Um, to get, to get some, to get it out to the members that we'd want, um, basically. Um, we can put something together for that. Um, but maybe we can post it on Facebook too, that we're looking for youth representatives for those committees along with a link to the application.
Good. Thank you. That's helpful. Uh, so I'll give him a holler tomorrow and see where we can take it.
Thanks, Paul.
Any other discussion on this item? We have a motion in second then on floor. All right. With that, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right. Uh, moving on then to new business. First up is uh, discuss and consider a request from Waste Management for a garbage and recycling service day change. There is a memo in the packet, and I believe there's a representative from Waste Management uh, in attendance. So and if they are, then I will turn it over to, to them.
Greetings, everyone. Uh, my name's Sean, manager with Waste Management. Um, we started looking at service day changes. Um, when we saw coming up in 2022, uh, we're facing some challenges with our uh, our routing. So the main issue right now, we're looking at, if you left everything the way it is now, is on certain days, we'd have like 14 routes. Other days, eight or 10. Um, and if we have 12 drivers, that's going to create service issues. So we started looking ahead and trying to plan a, a course of action that would be beneficial for the townships and beneficial for us to kind of balance it out and make sure we don't have any uh, service issues going forward. We had the idea of possibly servicing all of the town of Cottage Grove and all the villages of Cottage Grove on the same day. Um, the reason we thought that that'd be beneficial for the town and the village is say right now we have uh, truck breakdowns or drivers having issues, we had to send drivers from could be right across, could be about Mount Ora, could be in Bearaboo, could be any different location. If we had everybody in the same town on the same day, they'd have their buddies right in town that can come over and assist. To make sure there are, there are any issues, uh, we don't have any troubles completing the route that service day. Um, Mike, I believe, reached out and submitted kind of what we were thinking. Um, it sounds like there might have been some thoughts about that. We don't want to be on, on Friday might not be a great day. So we started looking at other options. Uh, he also proposed Thursday. But that's the main thing we're looking at right now is try to make sure we have balanced on our routes. And then also being able to support each other uh, for the routes if they ever have any issues while they're out there. But I'm also looking to see if we can balance out our routes with minimal impact to the town and village. Um, so I'm working on that right now and um, I'll get in touch with Mike once we wrap everything up and see if there's maybe minimal or possibly where we can get it, this taken care of without changing anything at all. But right now, we're seeing what our options are and seeing what the, the village thinks of possible day changes.
John, from a staff perspective, our, our main comment um, main, mainly revolved around the fr- the Friday pickup not being desirable from the standpoint of um, customer service issues if they come up and maybe can't be addressed, then they linger over the weekend and then people are even more frustrated come Monday. So we that's, that's the main staff input that we would have. But other than that, we just wanted to invite Waste Management to have a discussion with the board. On, on this uh, request.
Um, uh, thanks, Sean, for popping out and seeing us. Uh, any questions, comments from board members? And I would actually agree with the staff on Thursday, myself personally. Uh, to sort that out because again, if something happens. The other thing on Friday is if someone to, were planning on leaving for a long weekend, that would be probably one of those days that happens to be popular um, with, with a lot of folks, particularly in the summertime. But I'll, I'll turn it over to board members and get their thoughts.
I have a question around uh, regardless of options chosen. If, if my garbage pickup is today is on, or this right now is on Monday, would you pick up that same week or would I have to go a full cycle? Would I go like, so I'd go past my old Monday, let's say we did Thursday or Friday. Would it be Thursday or Friday the following week? So I'd go a week and then some? With the new change?
It could be either or. Typically, yeah, it'd just be whole, whole what you have um, for that extra couple of days. But we probably could work something out where we're serviced on Monday and then again on the next service day or on the new service day in that same week. So it, it could be either or.
I don't, it just depends on when you would make this change because like December's a rough time for transit.
It'd be too early or it'd be too late to get this done for like January. So we're, we're thinking at earliest probably beginning of February.
Okay. I mean, I certainly have my I mean, I certainly have my own opinions, right? Five people in my house, we make a lot of trash, but you know, that's just me personally, but I, I'll live without trash pickup for a week and a half. Thanks.
Other thoughts from board members? Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I was just wondering, so if the, so if I'm looking at this, the, the option with the town of Cottage Grove to align with them is just service option one, which would be on Friday, but then there's the separate service option two, which is just dependent on the village and that's on Thursday?
Right. There'll be more options. Like I said, I'm still trying to work out the, the most minimal impact towards the town and the village. Those are the first two that we worked on. Friday, with both going the same day was the first thing I worked, worked on. And then Mike said that Friday wasn't ideal, so I sort of worked, seen what we could do for Thursday possibly. But I'm still working on it, just trying to make sure we can get everything balanced. And it's looking like there is a possibility where we could just leave everything as is and still get everything balanced, because we're seeing who else we can get moved, so we can get all the holes filled, basically.
Okay, because my, I guess I just wanted to make sure that, because we don't know what the town would do. And so if it's dependent, dependent on both of us doing the same thing, I mean, we don't, we don't know what they'll do and what we'll do. So I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't an issue.
No, you're not tied to each other.
Okay, great.
You know, just have that support for the other drivers.
Right. I would say, I mean, it's hard to break habits, so, so not having trash pickup on our normal Mondays for my area of the village would be a little difficult, but I mean, I'm not, I haven't, I'm not tied to it. I mean, it's, I'm open, I would prefer not Friday for, I agree with staff, but I mean, I'd prefer to keep Monday too, but that's okay. I mean, I'm kind of open, I guess.
All right, other comments from board members?
I would agree, I would agree with Melissa. I think change is hard and, but we could do it if needed. But it would be great if we could keep our current schedule, because that's what folks are used to. And so it sounds like, Sean, that may be an option. So I don't know if we need to take action tonight or more just kind of indicate, well at least my indication would be that I totally understand the staffing issues and I like the idea of having the town and the village around the same day to offer that support to the drivers. So I'm supportive of all of that and would really love for that to be Monday and Tuesday, our current pickups, but open to if we need to move it.
Other board members' comments?
I was just wondering, I was thinking that the town is on Thursday by me? Is that, do they have multiple days for their pickups also?
Yeah, they're Wednesday, Thursday right now.
Oh, okay. But I would agree with Steph that Friday is not ideal to have it linger over the weekend. So I agree on that, that side too. Thanks.
Any other comments from board members? So I think what you're hearing is support for, you know, working this out so that you can have coverage and if a vehicle does break down, you've got one there that can, you know, or a driver needs to step away or whatever, you got, you got that support. We all can clearly see from the help wanted signs and stuff how hard it is to get folks that are skilled to do this type of stuff. So if that helps too, I think that's, that's good. And the consistency and if there is an issue, it's taken care of right away because there is multiple drivers available or trucks, et cetera, I think will help, you know, the overall service itself to the citizens. So I think that is. And I'll ask a legal question. Rick, do we need to provide, do we need to actually, this is a discuss and consider, do we need actually discuss and consider? Because we don't know what Sean's going to come up with for a date. And I think in general, from what I'm hearing from board members is we're, we're open to being flexible so that Waste Management can get more drivers in a particular area on a particular day, so that if there is an issue, we don't have, you know, pickup that's, that's not complete, which I think is the worst scenario and certainly want to avoid that.
Right, so just because it's a discuss and consider doesn't mean we need to actually make a decision tonight. So the fact that, you know, you're having this discussion, it started just teeing it up for maybe future action if necessary, but otherwise you can just sort of take in the information tonight and if a decision needs to be made in the future, we can make it in the future.
And Sean, do you have enough to go on? I mean, you got to jump over to the, to the town meeting now too, but.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then we will move on. So next item is discuss and consider the format for upcoming board member meetings, virtual or hybrid. Don't know.
I just had a couple of, yeah, I just had a couple of comments, John. I had mentioned the previous county, we have been following the county mandate and as long as that was in place, we were continuing with virtual meetings. But the, the one prior to this current mandate made a reference to, they did not anticipate extending it beyond that, and they ended up doing that. But before that, I was thinking, hey, we'd probably re- re-transition back to hybrid, you know, and leave it up to everyone's individual choice on, on, you know, attending virtually or in person. But the, the county ended up some, coming out with the mandate that's currently in place, which does give the stipulation of if everyone indoors is fully vaccinated, that you could be unmasked. However, for the purposes of a public meeting, assuming that someone from the public, public will come in, you know, to follow the mandate, we would want everyone masked at that meeting. And so given that, I, I guess just kind of circling back to the board as to maybe what, what your preferences are for the next couple of months of meetings, maybe just kind of getting some feedback, what everyone's preferences are. Obviously, these virtual meetings have seemed to work fairly well, but just making sure I'm checking in on this from time to time with you guys.
All right, thanks for Matt, Matt for that. Board members, thoughts?
I just want to note that it's Public Health of Madison and Dane County that came out with those, not Dane County itself.
Yes, sorry.
Other thoughts from board members? Thanks for the clarification, Melissa.
Maybe we're only talking one more meeting, right? Monday, the 20th? Do I have that right?
I, I guess it was for this current mandate, yes, but we don't. More so just looking down the road a couple of months, what's the board's preference?
Well, I would just think maybe you just wait and see until the, what happened, see what happens on the third and then revisit the conversation. I'm all for hybrid, I'm all coming in person, but you know, I mean, I would even be open to it right now. But maybe it would just make more sense to wait until, you know, we see what happens after, what is it, the third? I think that, to play devil's advocate, we were all expecting and public, the, the Public Health Department even indicated last month that they weren't going to renew, and then at the last minute changing their mind. I'm always kind of, I want to know the drama behind it, but that's neither here nor there. But like, if we just wait till the third, like they might extend it, they might, I mean, at some point, we just kind of have to own our own destiny, right? Like it's.
I guess I'm struggling to make that connection. I mean, the third is just a couple, what, two, three weeks away? You know, do we want to make a decision on this right now? Or do you want to just wait until, and I get that, you know, I mean, we all lived that with our businesses, we were certain that they were going to drop it, you know? Or do we just want to make a decision to go to hybrid right now?
Can we just go to hybrid? I, I've heard from a lot of folks, I mean, Omicron notwithstanding, but I've heard from a lot of residents who are like, why can't we go back to in-person? I think hybrid's the best. Because then it, hybrid, the way we've structured the ordinance, it gives us all the, our own ability to, to choose whether or not we want to stay home or go to the meeting. And some of us will, and I think we'll go back and forth depending on your own personal choice from week to week. So then, I think giving that hybrid option is, gives us more flexibility. And then if Dane, if the, the Public Health Department decides to restrict something, who knows what's going to happen at this point, it may well be, but I think hybrid just gives everybody a little bit more flexibility.
I'm good with that approach.
I would want to.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Oh, was somebody else talking? Sorry, David, where is that you? Oh, I was just gonna, I would also support going hybrid. I would, regardless of the Public Health mask mandate, I would like us to follow the CDC man masking guidance, which is even if fully vaccinated, if we're in an area of high transmission, that we wear a mask. So I, I would put that as my, not necessarily Public Health mask mandate as the, why, if we would have to wear a mask or not, but rather the CDC's guidance. And we are in the state of high transmission, and I do think we should show responsible behavior in masking, even if the county in January were to remove the mask mandate, that we have them when we're in-person meeting would be, would be what I would like to see.
I'd agree with that too, sure.
Good with me.
Just a question on, on that, what, when people present and they're in-person, should, should they be masked or, or not?
Yes.
Okay, I thought there was a, I thought there was a stipulation for, for that as well before, but.
For people who present? For people who present? What, was there some, I mean, so the.
Yeah, I thought, I thought there was a, maybe, Matt, I don't, I don't know if you can jump in, I, I thought there was something about if there's someone doing a presentation, the person presenting can have their mask off.
Right, if they have to get in front of a microphone? Or just a podium, or just?
Right.
Because I think we're all going to be speaking, I think it would be appropriate for us to continue to mask, but if there's a presentation.
Right, yeah, it's when, it's for, yeah. Matt, am I making that up or, or is that accurate?
Nope, that's accurate.
Okay.
And then, you know, just to add on top of that too, then the, the board's making it a mandate for themselves to be masked, but if you have citizen members that come in, are we were going to be requiring them to be masked too during the board meetings, even if they're just sitting? If Madison Public Dane County lift their mask mandate for indoors. I'm just playing devil's advocate here.
My answer is yes. Now, I don't know the legal piece around if we can do that, but I, and we, I just really feel strongly that if we're in an area of high transmission, that we be masked and that the others around us be masked. If, if the transmission rate isn't high anymore, then I would, I'd be okay with, with being more loose about it, but we don't have hospital beds in this city, so we cannot, we need to keep the transmission down and masks is what does that. So I'll get off my soapbox.
Does, does Public Health, I, I, at one point too, I thought they mentioned to not get into enforcing it as far as like, if someone comes in from the public unmasked, I believe we're not supposed to get into that with that person, because it, it can, it just can escalate. Is that also accurate, Matt?
I mean, no, you just set your own policy. And I don't think it's unreasonable to ask everybody to mask, you know, throughout the duration of those meetings.
Right.
If we're all saying we're doing it.
Right, I'm saying.
I would even say that.
And they say no. I, I'm just, I'm just saying, and they refuse to, then what? We offer the hybrid, hybrid solution for them. Sorry, you're not willing to mask, hop on your smartphone, hop on a computer and be confused.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that's why we keep the hybrid option.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I, I don't think this hybrid has held us back from, you know, continuing to get the business that needs to be done for the village. I think we've seen more public participation than we ever saw with in-person meetings before the hybrid was an option. I, I don't see any reason now whether folks wear masks or not, that's another debate, but to forcibly have people in, in, in closed, closed area and as long as it's not holding us back. You know, wouldn't it be nice for everybody to get in their cars tonight, it's 10 degrees, and you leave and you're in your car for two minutes to go home and the cars aren't even warmed up versus just sitting in the comfort of wherever you're at?
To answer your question, Matt, though, is you, you are right. There is no, Madison Public Health doesn't want, I mean, there is no enforcement. If the only enforcement that's out there is through their complaint line, law enforcement's not going to get involved. There is no ordinance on the Village of Cottage Grove books that mandates it, so we have nothing that we can write. So it'll all go through that department for any enforcement action.
Right, I, I was just bringing it up, just in, you know, that situation arises where someone from the public comes in, they're unmasked, maybe we ask them to please mask, and they still refuse to. I'm, I'm just making it clear that there's not much that can be done.
There is nothing stopping the rest of us from going hybrid then at that point if we don't feel comfortable in leaving.
Yep.
I, I think it's worth a conversation, because you know, and I'm assuming you guys run into this with your business, but you have people that just will tell you they have a medical, medical exemption, and at that point, you can't ask any more questions. If, if they say they have a medical exemption, then, you know, so be it. If they don't have a mask on and they say they have a medical exemption, then, then the conversation is done. So, you know, you might run into something like that too.
Do we have boxes of masks available? Or maybe we need to stock that, like at the entrance near the sign-in, you know, for someone that may not have a mask with them, but they're there available? I don't know if we have that at Village Hall.
We don't currently have any out. People have, you know, 99% of the time or more have, have been, you know, without any conversation, just following it. So it hasn't been a problem, and we do have some extra masks and probably could have them out without many being taken, because I think most would, most would come in and comply. I was just kind of making sure we're all thinking of the situation of, I mean, all it takes is one person to kind of create a scene, and we've been able to avoid that so far, and just wanted to make sure we're, we're thinking that, thinking about what happens in that situation.
I would assume we'd set expectation too, that moving forward, at this point, we're requiring masks as an internal policy for these board meetings and that that would be messaged out, however we, you know, put that out in terms of allowing public, you know, community members to come to these meetings.
One can just list it on the top of the agenda. CDC recommendations are currently blah, 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 whatever they are, reverted masks in a quote space.
Will we extend this to committees or just go board virtual? Will we extend this to committees or, um, just go board virtual now and then, extend it at some other point or? Any other idea?
I guess that's, that's up to individual, individual committees. Um, if it's going to be hybrid though, then that's gonna, I, I guess that's something J, JJ, can, can you speak to as how we would, do that as far as cable staff and?
There's possibility that if the committee wants to go that route, then we may have to move some dates. Um, but I mean, I think that could be, once we've had some successful board meetings, plan commissioned, maybe we bring it up at every committee, but, um, I'll get a firm timeline from our cable coordinator. I know there are, there's at least one evening we can't do. Um, but once I could get that set in stone, the committees could have that discussion if they'd be willing to move days or times to make it work. It'll have to be a bill of twelve two, so it'd be a little extra coordinating, but I think it's doable.
Ask all the board members that, uh, pre-COVID, how did you manage your time? Four or five meetings getting in person? That's kind of, that's difficult. And I know you guys did it, but I think that's what COVID taught us, is we've, had the ability to learn some efficiencies in how we're doing meetings, specifically virtually.
And, and if, if we're recording the meetings from a virtual standpoint, why does cable need to be involved with the meetings? Do you need two recordings in the meetings? I know this one is, is in particular, you know, put out on the, uh, YouTube or whatever, but, are the other committee, all the other committee meetings broadcast as well? Nope, and it is, you're right. It's, it's more of, I think hopefully our cable coordinator could train possibly like me and Sean and, some, some other folks up to get just a basic level of, of the camera working and hooking the zoom in. Um, so we can have the hybrid option without recording. Yeah, it's more of just coordinating hybrid, which I do think is a little easier at committee if we kind of, set the room up just right. Um, but it's, it's more of just the capabilities that Sean and I have, so, that might be our, our biggest hurdle.
Matt, do you have enough, uh, direction on this?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure if we're, cause right now it's only a virtual meeting, there's no hybrid option. I just wanted to, um, it sounds like everyone's good with, with going to hybrid, and I just wanted to make sure we weren't continually to o- only offer, virtual and if that's not what people wanted, so.
All right. So you got what you need, and so we can take that approach in the future.
Yes, thank you.
All right, with that then, uh, we'll move to IMC, and this is, uh, IT Managed Services Proposals and Interviews. We have, uh, three, from my, uh, notes here, we have three, um, vendors who are planning on presenting this evening. Um, first is Johnson Block Business Technologies. And I'm assuming that since right about what time we told them to be here, uh, that we do have a representative on from Johnson Block Business Technologies, or representatives. And JJ, I don't know if you want to say anything since you kind of set all this up.
I, uh, nope, I see Larry's here and I'll, uh, I'll turn it right over to him. He can go ahead and, and start his presentation here.
All right, good evening, everybody. Um, I talked to JJ a little bit about this. Uh, it seems everybody's already had the proposal for a while. I don't want to rehash everything, you know, line item by line item tonight. I just kind of want to go over what we do and how we do it. Uh, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. Um, it's, it's really all there is to it. I, I don't want to make it more complicated than it is. Um, obviously, JBC Business Technologies, it's four people. Um, we actually do two municipalities already. Uh, we're pretty familiar with some of the things that you guys face in terms of like elections and SCADA stuff, and utilities, public works, that kind of thing. So, um, we do have some knowledge of some of this stuff already and, pretty, pretty good grasp on how to handle it. Um, really, our focus is pretty simple. It's, it's on response time. It's on resolution time. It's on organizational uptime as a whole, everybody, and security. Um, I don't think it's any secret that local municipalities are one of the prime targets for, you know, the bad actors these days, so, um, getting that locked down is easily the most important thing you'll do, uh, because you don't, you don't want to end up on the other side of that. Uh, we've yet to see that, so I, I, I hope we hold it that way, cause it's no fun when you end up there. Um, we do, all sorts of user training, security stuff, you know, all the stuff that everybody thinks is really boring but necessary, and they're probably right. Uh, it's, it's pretty standard. I mean, it's, you know, we're not doing anything nobody else is. We just probably do it faster and we care more. It's kind of our mentality. Um, you can reach us several ways. Most people email us, nothing wrong with that. We have a phone number, you can call us anytime. We have a web portal that absolutely nobody uses, but it's there if you want to use it. Uh, and we do have a chat client. If you want to create a ticket through chat, you get connected directly to a technician and you can chat your way through it. Um, I'll be honest, most chats end up with a phone call, but, you know, whatever, whatever's the easiest for you is fine by us. Uh, we are going to start offering a text message service too, so however you want to get ahold of us, we want to be, we want to be available to you. Uh, outside of that, really, it just comes down to how do we get you to where you need to go and how, where you need to be. Uh, we have a pretty standardized roadmap for that. Anybody that looked at the proposal probably saw it. The first thing is, uh, vendor licensing. Typically forty-two percent of companies are over-licensed, meaning they're paying for stuff that they're not using. Taking that money back's the first step. Um, we audit the network and we audit the security. We'll meet with you, we'll implement all the changes that need to be made, and then we immediately start the user training and the security stuff. Um, after that, we create the hardware life cycles so that we're not stuck on old machines, you know, every now and then there's like the, the one guy that's got like a nine-year-old machine, and nobody knew about it. Try to eliminate that, so it always comes up. We've got a cycle going. Uh, and, and after that, it's just kind of rinse and repeat, and we keep going from there. Um, there's a couple of ways we do it too, and we can work with you however you'd like us to. Typically, we have a single point of contact that will get either approvals from or, you know, purchase requests from that sort of stuff. Totally fine. Some places we'll just have it, kind of anybody can, can contact us for anything. Uh, but we do request that there's at least one point of contact to approve purchasing, uh, cause you know, you don't want to just have people, getting all sorts of stuff. Maybe they don't even need it, somebody else already knows that. Um, outside of that, really, I guess the, the question, I, I would have a few questions for you guys, honestly. Let's, you know, make sure that we're a good fit and you're a good fit on our end. You know, long-term goals, what are we looking to accomplish? Are we trying to be more efficient? Um, some places are trying to use less software. A lot of places are trying to get more out of the software they already have. Uh, or, you know, evaluate new softwares. We do all that stuff for everybody. Um, is the phone system up to par? Is your internet speed correct? Are you paying too much for your internet? Oftentimes, that's the case. Um, you know, people will be stuck on the same internet provider they've had for ten years and they don't think about it. And if you do a, an audit of it, it turns out that you're paying three hundred dollars more than you're supposed to or something like that, so. Uh, we always look at that. And then, you know, a lot of places looking to go to a hybrid work environment. It, you know, things are pretty uncertain these days, so everybody wants to be prepared. Uh, if that's not in place already, that's something we want to look at. And then obviously, security, so, you know, I guess that's really all I have. I, I don't want to take up too much of your time. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, uh, board members, any questions for Larry?
I got all kinds. Um, Larry, uh, question here, when I, when I look at your, your RFP, right? You mentioned, um, Tapos firewall, so we, we already have firewalls in place.
Sure. Do you know, um, do you know when you got them?
I do not, no.
Okay, so, uh, we'll let them go to end of the licensing. Um, so, one of the problems we do see some places is they'll use, I think Fortinet is one of the more common firewalls. If that license lapses, they will stop everything from coming through and you'll just be down. Um, which is why we've switched to so far from that, because they'll at least let you work while you get the license fixed. Uh, but we can easily log in, we'll get the credentials, figure out when that license is up, and kind of, you know, phase it out as appropriate.
Okay. I do have Fortigate, and, uh, it doesn't die, at least the one I have.
Uh, when the license ends?
Yeah, it's still, it still runs.
Oh, it still passes traffic?
Yeah, it's.
I'm, I'm guessing they changed that because there was a lot of complaining last time I saw it. Yeah, that's awesome.
So, okay, that's, that's good to hear. Um, can you describe, you see, you mentioned training, right? So obviously, the staff is up and running today. They're, you know, business is running. Like, when you say that you, 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 you get a new customer and you, you do some training, can you kind of give me a, a feel for what that looks like? Knowing that, that staff is already well in flight?
Yeah, so a lot of times it's supplemental stuff and efficiency, um, items. So there's simple little tools. There's a program called Greenshot that you can use to screenshot. And you can just, within a couple of seconds, you've got a box, you've got an arrow, you've got to copy and paste it into an email, it's good to go. People don't think about stuff like that, but the faster you can get that stuff off, the faster you move on to other things. Uh, we've also started, uh, showing people how to use a program called Open Broadcast Software OBS. I don't know if you're familiar.
Very familiar.
Yeah, so, you know, recording some of the processes, getting, getting your own training documented for the next person that you hire. Um, so, helping you train yourselves, not, not as much, you know, us just bringing something new in, but every step of the way, can we document this? Can we get this to a point where somebody can reference it without having to, you know, make a bunch of calls?
Okay. Um, just two more questions. Um, on the, I was looking through your products and services. I didn't notice anything that mentioned, and maybe I missed it, but, um, anything about Office three sixty-five certifications?
Uh, so, for the certifications or the reselling of it?
Uh, how about both?
Yeah, so we're, we're a certified reseller, yeah. Um, so that, that's really passed through. I mean, we don't do a lot with that, so it's not something I would advertise as something we do, but we do provide it, and that way you can have us make all the changes.
How about related to training though, when it comes to office?
Yeah, sure. I mean, we do all sorts of stuff with that. Uh, Teams is obviously growing. I don't know if you guys are using that currently. Uh, but there's been a mass kind of exodus off of other platforms like Slack and, and whatnot, because it's, it's included, so why not use it? Um, so yeah, we, we do all sorts of, of, uh, trainings on that. We do a monthly training at a lot of places. We'll go by and, maybe it's probably not monthly anymore with the COVID stuff. It's probably kind of quarterly at this point, but whenever we want to do it, we can. So what will I do is just ask for a bunch of questions to be submitted. Hey, it would be cool if I could do this. Is that something I can do? And we'll kind of form them all together into like maybe a half hour or something and drop out and show everybody how to do that.
Okay, okay. And then, um, I could, so to be clear, just for the record, I do work for Microsoft, so I, I work in this space, so.
Oh, sure, perfect.
But, so, uh, the last question, I could, I could talk about this stuff all day.
Yeah, we'll go offline sometime.
Tell me about your, your change management practices, right? So if you're going to do like, uh, maybe a single sign-on change, or you're going to do something, a, a mass change, can you kind of just really briefly kind of outline what your change management practices are?
Sure, well, like, that's going to kind of come back to the whole point of contact thing. I mean, we need to work through somebody on the other side also. Um, we install tools that will document any change in Active Directory, Microsoft three sixty-five switches or firewalls. And it will denote what day that was made, and it will show you what the change is going back a year. Um, so that's automated, so we have the technical side covered from an automated standpoint. Uh, that's just communication, so we're going to reach out to, you know, this is the time we're going to do it. If this change causes trouble, this is our rollback. And, I mean, we won't do anything without a rollback plan. Um, luckily, we haven't had to use any of those, but, yeah, th- there's always, there's always a plan written out, there's a fallback plan, and then obviously the technical side is covered.
Okay, that's it. And, sorry, I did promise one, this, I promised the last.
It's fine, it's fine.
I did notice, um, in your products and services, you did mention Okta. Um, how do you, like, is that, is that a, a standard that you try to stick to across customers or?
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty much the leader in the space. They have the most integrations and things like that. So if you're going to go all in with any tool, it's definitely the best in my opinion at this point. We're open to anything. We'll help you how you want. We can evaluate other vendors for you also, do a pro con. Uh, but at least in our experience and, and just on sheer number of integrations, Okta pretty much rules that space.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
John, I just have one, one, uh, comment for, for Larry. Larry, thanks for the proposal and, and for coming here tonight. Um, to answer your, your question about what we're looking for, at least from, from my perspective, the, um, one of the biggest things is to kind of be an extension of staff. We don't have an IT position, so, this, this position, although a consultant is, kind of carries that, that role. And, and we want that person to be, um, proactive and not, you know, if you have a recommendation, bring it forward. Don't wait till we ask, because it's a blind spot for, you know, for our staff. We don't have that expertise. So that's the biggest thing I'm looking for from, um, from my, my role at the village.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, that, that's really one of our goals as we partner with people, cause that's what it is, it's partnership, right? We want to be part of your organization. Um, and I don't know if you called any of the references, but Windsor, the Village of Windsor is very, very much like that. I mean, we've stayed after for meetings, hung around and just hang out, you know. Uh, we, we want you to come to us with stuff too. A lot of times people just say, you know, if you have a problem, contact us. But, you know, if you have a question even about home, just shoot us an email, let's see if we can help you out, you know? Um, we definitely want that. Also, if you guys do any, you know, uh, community events, charity, things like that, we would love to be invited. Uh, that's, that's kind of right up our alley. We don't, we don't want to be the guys you call when things are wrong. We want to be part of what you're doing, so. Yeah, I, I think that, that would fit kind of our mentality pretty well also.
Thank you.
Uh, Larry, it's John. A quick question about just, uh, security training, uh, that you guys provide. Obviously, the big, one of the biggest parts of security training is really about the individual user knowing what not to click usually. Um, and that type of thing, and it's always, you know, you can have the, the best firewall and this and that and the other thing, but if you've got somebody that gets a, uh, you know, a nasty email or something like that and clicks the wrong thing, you now have, uh, you know, some problems to deal with. So what type of training do you do for just individuals? And how do you keep that up? Because unfortunately, as the bad actors, as you said, are always getting better at what they do.
Yeah, so we partnered with a company called No Before. Uh, anybody in the space will know who they are. They're, they're the leader. Um, you can, you can train on anything. What we do is we set up the automated testing for the emails, okay? So you'll get your phishing every week or so, or whatever we set it up to be. We can do whatever schedule we'd like. If you click on it and you fail, it's going to automatically send you to a training. Once a year, we recommend doing the training, like the full training for each person. Um, so you start a campaign for that. Whoever important contact would be, we would work with to show them. You know, there's always somebody that's not going to do it. You guys know who it is, I don't. But we got to get on that person to finish it up, and then the campaign's closed. From there, we start the emails. And then again, once you're failing, you go to that. In addition to that, there's a million different avenues they can train on, just voluntarily. Social engineering, you know, cer- that sort of stuff. Uh, so you can do as much or as little as you want to mandate or require of the staff. Uh, but you can also offer a lot of voluntary trainings should anybody want them. So we, we would just need to sit down and kind of figure out, obviously phishing is the biggest one, right? Cause people get email and they click it, and it's too late. Uh, but there's all sorts of other trainings we can implement too.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Uh, any other questions from board members?
Larry, would there be an extra cost for that Office three sixty-five?
Yes, that's just, that's through Microsoft. It's just pass-through. We don't, we don't make any money. You would just pay the same. It would just come through us so that we can make the changes for you.
For the record, Sarah, we already utilized Office three sixty-five.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Larry, from board members, comments? Otherwise, thank you, Larry, for coming out and, and, uh, sharing, uh, and just highlighting some of the things from the RFP, as well as addressing our questions. I appreciate it.
All right, have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have LanTech Services.
Hi.
Hello.
I am JJ Antonetti from LanTech Services.
Hi, I'm JJ Antonetti from Land Tech Services.
And I'm Jaren Abaglin.
All right, welcome. Um, take it away.
Uh, well, uh, basically, uh, Land Tech Services has been in business for, oh, since two thousand and three. Um, we've been providing IT services for municipalities and also for the private sector for, uh, during that whole period of time. Uh, we've, we've dealt with, uh, a multitude of municipalities and, and like I said, the, the private sector, uh, is pretty big in our list. Um, we, uh, basically do, uh, we're basically a roving IT department. Uh, you can think of, uh, us as a roving IT department. Uh, we basically go through almost, uh, anything that you can imagine on any day possible. Um, the reason why I talked to you a little bit about the private sector is, is that, uh, the private sector is a little bit more cutting edge than, uh, the, uh, public sector is. Uh, they allow, uh, a lot different varied, uh, options. And, uh, we tend to like to implement a lot of things, uh, based on, uh, what we know and, uh, gives us a little bit of a different feel as to, uh, you know, instead of just basically public, uh, uh, municipalities, et cetera. So, um, that's kind of a little bit about us. Um, Jaren's been working, uh, at Land Tech Services for over eleven years. Um, and, uh, we've, uh, been doing this for a really long time.
All right, wonderful. Um, any questions from board members?
Oh, I don't have any questions for the board members.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry. I was asking the board members if they have any questions for you guys. Sorry.
That's fine.
AJ, I've got some questions for you. So, uh, for the record, my employer makes me announce it, so I work for Microsoft, so. Um, had, had some questions around kind of, um, we have a lot of existing hardware, uh, both networking and, and otherwise, right? And I'm, I'm just curious what your, um, what's your strategy, right? Like, I did look through your RFP. It did talk about how you would, you know, basically, you know, for the first week to the first month, right? Um, investigate and then mitigate any issues, right? But I'm curious from a contractual standpoint, do you guys, you have a, a specific type of hardware that you like to work with? Like, let's say firewalls, for example. Um, do you kind of work with whatever's there? Kind of, kind of give me a, a grounding in there?
Yeah, um, w- we work with what is there. Uh, we do have some, uh, choices that we really like, uh, for firewalls. We really like Fortigate or Fortinet, uh, products. Um, they do a, a, a very good job, uh, that we work a lot with that. Um, typically, um, because they're very, very solid in the FIPS complacency. Um, uh, other hardware, uh, we, we work with Dell. I've personally worked with Dell since nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, so, uh, I've used a lot of Dell equipment, but that doesn't necessarily mean that all of my clients or all of our clients use Dell. Um, it's anywhere from Lenovo to HP to, uh, any other type of, uh, basically PCs. So, uh, we've basically looked and, and have shared, uh, all different types of, uh, hardware that we've gone ahead and, and worked with. Uh, but, uh, Dell and, uh, like I said, the, uh, Fortinet is, is one of our, our, our bigger ones. Um, we do work with, uh, a lot of different wireless and connectivity, uh, um, companies. In fact, uh, we do a lot with, uh, HP switches. Um, we also work, uh, a lot with Ubiquity products.
Yeah, I've got, I know. I could nerd out on this stuff all night. Um, next question, um, you know, one thing that, that the village is really looking for, um, not necessarily the board, but the staff in general, right? Is, is, you know, a partner that can help with, with training, right? Like, um, I'll give you an example. Um, you know, like, and I, I don't mean to call Matt out here, but I'll just use it as an example. Um, you know, there was a, you know, again, I work at Microsoft, so I work in Teams and OneDrive all day long, right? App works re- fa- regularly, um, you know, in their, in network drives instead, right? Is there, is there kind of a, a use case or, or a scenario where you would, you would go into a, a, a public sector customer and say, hey, I see, I noticed you're using, you know, file shares. Have you tried OneDrive? Can I show you how to use OneDrive? Like, would that be kind of a, a use case in training that you would do? Or if, if the staff is happy to use network drives, would you continue to say, okay, you guys use network drives? That's cool.
Um, i- it's, it's based, uh, actually on, um, needs. Um, it's also based on, uh, what people really feel comfortable with. Um, I, I do get, you know, everybody gets, uh, the learning curve. Um, but no, we, we do training on all different types of things. We've, we've gone ahead and one of our, uh, private sector clients, we moved everything to SharePoint because it was a better fit for them than, uh, network shared drives. Um, it just fit for them because they were all over the whole uni- uh, all over Wisconsin. So, uh, it worked for them a lot better. Um, so it all really, really fits into what really needs to have happen. Um, I don't, you know, we don't have any problems training anybody. Um, we really pride ourselves on communication.
Would you, let me, let me ask it in a slightly different way or a follow-up. Would you, would you be proactive in that training though? Would you kind of, you know, I think I'm not to call Matt out, but like, Matt, I know you, you're, you're struggling with network drives. Have you, let me show you how to use OneDrive, for example.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely. Um, you know, or, uh, or, you know, they do need to go ahead and, and use this, uh, uh, a specific, uh, port of, part of, uh, the network. You know, hey, uh, this, you know, we can easily do it a lot easier. You can do it this way instead of going through all this to go ahead and get to where you're at. Um, being more efficient, obviously, is, is where we all want to be, uh, more efficient in what we do on a day-to-day basis.
Okay. Um, I just have two more questions. Uh, regarding Office three sixty-five, are you, are you a reseller? Or, I guess, two questions that, do you resell Office three sixty-five? And as a separate question, do you have any, um, uh, competencies from Microsoft in Office three sixty-five? So like, uh, like gold or silver competency?
No, um, we don't, and, uh, especially for the municipalities, um, because, uh, basically, uh, I'll, I'll let Jaren handle this one. Uh, he, he's, he's got, uh, he's got a lot more knowledge in, in this portion of it.
Okay.
So with three sixty-five and government, one of the largest things is there are only, to be a true governmental account, there are only seven providers throughout the United States who are licensed to sell the governmental products. Uh, so by going through someone else, you, you are not in what they call the government cloud, um, which has a higher security level than the public sector cloud being, you know, what you can sign up with through even a, a, a gold or, or platinum level partner. Uh, so wi- with that, um, if you guys are not on the governmental cloud, uh, there would be potential to change that over so that you are on governmental only servers and not per se, uh, private sector servers. Um, they have a higher level of security on those. They follow one hundred percent FIPS complacency and require, uh, you know, purchasing those licenses through one of those seven providers. We, uh, have a very good partnership with Liftoff, um, which is one of those seven providers that, uh, we, we work with very frequently.
Okay. Cool. Then last question. Can you kind of describe your change management practices?
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
Yeah, can you, can you, uh, give me a, a brief kind of understanding of your change management practices? So like, if you're gonna do like, I don't know, a single sign-on change, uh, like that's, that's org-wide or something like that? Like, what would, what would a typical change management process look like for you?
Um, well, basically, we, it, it, we would leave it down to, uh, what we're actually gonna go ahead and change. Um, if you're talking about a single sign-on, um, we basically would, uh, go ahead and discuss, you know, who's, who, what are we changing? And where we're gonna go from there. Um, and, uh, basically build it up from the hierarchy. Um, we, you know, we usually have a specific point person at most of our municipalities and we take a lot of direction from those people. Um, and it makes it a lot cleaner, um, when we do it that way. Um, I don't know if I'm actually answering the question correctly.
That's okay. I, I think I was, I was looking more towards your, kind of your communication practices when it comes to changes.
Mm-hmm. Um, well, it's, it's all done from, directly from, uh, our point person. Our point of, uh, you know, person who, who we have, uh, basically contact with. Um, you know, uh, we, we, like I said, we, we normally have a single person or, or, or several people depending upon departments, et cetera, that we deal with. Um, and from that, from that hierarchy is where we basically come down to it.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions from board members? I guess I'll, I'll shoot mine out then. Um, regarding security training, uh, what type of security training do you guys offer? Um, again, um, more worried about like the phishing that goes on, the individual user and, and typically the, you know, your weakest link is your, you know, your, you know, the person that isn't aware of kind of the best practices, uh, with an organization.
Um, we partner with, uh, a company called No Before. Um, they basically do, uh, a lot of the abilities to go ahead and do a self-check study. Um, it is up to the individual to actually finish the coursework. So, uh, you know, they can log in at specific times and, and do, uh, the phishing attempts, et cetera. Um, and, uh, that's basically what, who we use to go ahead and do these things. Uh, No Before is, uh, a pretty prominent company, uh, that has done all sorts of different, uh, phishing, uh, attempt, uh, mitigations.
All right, thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, question, any other questions from board members? Land Tech? All right. Well, thanks, gentlemen, for, um, coming out and, uh,
Sure.
answering our questions and sharing a little bit about your organization. We really appreciate that.
Sure. Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Yep.
Bye.
Thank you. Bye. Um, next, uh, we'll move over to Marco Technologies. Is there?
You're a couple minutes ahead of schedule, John. I can reach out and see, but. Be in the air.
Might just be easier to move ahead to the next item and then we can go back to that, because they're, they're probably not gonna log on till eight.
Okay. Thanks.
That would be my suggestion.
Yep. Um, all right, with that, then we'll move right down to reports from village boards, commissions and committees. Uh, starting off with Peer Court Committee, and that is David.
Yep, uh, let me pull up my notes here. So we met. Um, uh, let's see here. Claudia discussed open and pending cases. There's five total cases right now. Um, things are really slow right now. Around some period in Madison, there's only about one to two cases per week. Um, they did get their grant from Dane County. It's undergoing implementation. Uh, the goal is to serve about a hundred and twenty youths. Um, there will be training soon. Um, basically, uh, documentation and, and kind of updates are, will come at the next meeting. Um, and then we tabled the retail theft discussion. Um, I'm sorry, not retail, the, basically the home invasions that we're, you know, continuing to see in the village. Um, Briar Patch might have some ideas there. So we'll, we kind of put that, we call it a theft panel is the idea that we're gonna work with. But we table that for the next meeting. And the next meeting is January eighteenth.
All right. Any questions for David?
Can, can you just clarify what you mean by home invasions?
I, I meant the, um, not home invasions. Uh, basically, uh, people that are, uh, going around the village and trying for open or unlocked vehicles, uh, th- there was people, they can't get into your home, right? So, um, we're all aware of that, but, uh, no, you're right. I should not have used the term home invasion. I should have said just basically the, uh, the, the thefts that we have noticed in the, in the village, thefts and burglaries.
Okay, good. I was like, how did I not hear about this?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, there's.
Thank you for that clarification.
No home invasions, just to be clear.
Well, I think there actually has been from the law enforcement committee that we've heard about. I don't know, maybe I'm speaking out of turn, Lieutenant Wagner.
I guess, I'm not a lawyer, so I'll, I'll lean on Matt and, uh, Rick to clarify here, but, uh, there are thefts and burglaries and Briar Patch has some ideas. Matt, I think, uh, you were at the last meeting. Any thoughts, Ted?
I was. Um, yeah, home invasion is a, is a made-up term. It's not a, it's not a legal term. Uh, we either have burglaries or robberies. Uh, and robberies are something that's done by force, so we only have, have had burglaries in the village. Um, but yes, Briar Patch did come up with, uh, utilizing their grant, uh, possible ways to get somewhat of a consortium together to help curb, uh, the stolen, um, stolen vehicles, the theft from autos, um, the uptick in, uh, juvenile crime that we have had in the county, uh, over the recent six months to twelve months.
All right. Thanks for the clarification. Um, then we'll move on then to, uh, library board. Melissa?
Thanks, John. Uh, it was a short meeting. Basically, the, we, we verified what positions we would have on the library board, which include president, vice president, secretary and treasurer. Um, and I, I remember who is, what, I believe Erica's secretary, Allison is treasurer and Stefan Way is vice president, but I didn't have to take the minutes, so I don't remember specifically. Um, and in addition to those, but we'll ver- we're going to, um, vote on those at our next meeting. Um, we just were clarifying what positions to create. And, um, well, we reviewed library boards and goals and bylaws, which will, um, also go through and vote on at our next meeting. And, uh, so it was fairly short and our next meeting is December fifteenth.
All right. Any questions for Melissa? All right, um, and jump back. Do we have Marco Technologies? I know we're a minute ahead, but on the line?
Not yet.
Okay, that's fine. Um, we'll move right to Heidi for Parks and Recs and Forestry.
Sure, thanks. Uh, we met on the eighteenth and one of our main topics was talking about resident versus non-resident program rates. We kind of had, um, a rigid structure for non-resident program rates and wanted some more flexibility. So if you had a cookie decorating class, that a resident rate would be thirty dollars, you could do just a small. So if you had a cookie decorating class, that a resident rate would be thirty dollars, you could do just a small increase to thirty-five dollars for the non-resident rate rather than, um, taking some of our other program rates, kind of the more rigid non-resident rate, um, just creating more flexibility to, um, not make the programs, uh, too expensive, kind of out of reach for non-residents to participate. Um, we talked about budget, we talked about, um, continental properties, uh, just that that's moving and the dog park scheduled there is still on schedule. Um, Sean had his report, which is where we, uh, gave some feedback on the student representative, youth representative. Uh, we're not meeting in December due to the holiday week and conflicts, so we're gonna pick up in January. Um, Sean, did you have any, have anything to add on?
Nope, you got it all.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thanks Heidi. Uh, any questions for Heidi or Sean? All right, move on then, um.
Just, uh, if I can, please, um, i- i- when we look at resident, non-resident rates, I, I just wanna make sure that we're covering cost of a non-resident because they, they aren't paying taxes in the village, they're paying taxes in the community wherever they live.
I can answer that one, Heidi. Um, yeah, Troy, we definitely are, and most of these programs that we're talking about are things that we facilitate, as Heidi mentioned, like the cookie class and things like that, and we, um, we are covering the costs with those. With the, with the tiered program as it sits right now, a cookie class for a resident would be like thirty dollars and for a non-resident, it would be like fifty dollars. So you're basically paying ten dollars for, per cookie to do it. So, um, if we, that's why we wanted to just kind of follow along with what other communities are doing with programs like that, so kind of enrichment or adult enrichment programs. Um, it's just tack on that, that extra five dollars. We really, we're definitely covering our costs.
Okay, all right, all right. I bet the, uh, ten dollar cookies taste really good, though.
They better, they better.
They better.
Um, all right. One, sorry, that just brought up a question, I guess, if, um, have we, have our classes been full with, um, like have we been able to fill all of our classes?
Yeah, it's been busy. Um, not everything has been sold out, but, um, the ones that we've offered, uh, we have, uh, we are actually making a little bit of money on those programs, not just covering costs. So yes, people have been receptive.
Okay, good, because I mean, the other thing too is we don't want to just have it be so that only village residents do it and then we aren't filling up the classes. Uh, uh, so it's good that we have, um, flexibility to just include others from outside our community that maybe pay a little, just a little bit more and then we're able to fill up the whole class. But if we were, um, yes, if, the opposite, if we had like a run of village people just wanting to get into these classes, um, or programs and, um, we were having more outside residents, like that might be something, we'd wanna look into further, but it doesn't sound like that's a problem, so. It sounds like everything's going well.
Yeah, it's certainly not a problem at this point, but if it did become an issue where non-residents were filling up our classes, we would have to address that. You are correct.
Great, thanks.
All right, um, I don't see Marco on there yet. Right, JJ?
John, I think JJ's working on trying to get in contact with them. I, I don't know what's going on.
Okay, well then we're gonna just, uh, thank you, Matt. We'll just keep moving ahead. I see that Chief's on here. We'll move to, uh, Deer Grove EMS. We have a couple discussing considers. I'll turn this over to Sarah and Troy.
Uh, we met on, uh, November eighteenth. Um, calls for the month were, um, up from one oh two, up to one oh two from seventy-two year to date were plus one fifty-four, uh, in the village itself. Um, we are, uh, last year we're at three sixty-two, we're up to four twenty-four. Uh, we are on track for the year of approximately one thousand two hundred and twenty calls. Um, EMS study, uh, we will have a, uh, presentation by TAA in our next meeting. Um, looking at the ARPA funds, uh, you know, the village of Cottage Grove, village of Deerfield and town of Cottage Grove are willing to look at spending their funds for that as long as it's, uh, it's, uh, actually, we can use them for it. Uh, town of Pleasant Springs and town of Deerfield are unsure, again, they are contract, uh, contract, um, users of our services. Um, we, um, approved Johnson and Block, uh, for the twenty twenty-one, uh, audit and not to exceed eight thousand one hundred and fifty bucks. Um, collective bargaining has, uh, been passed by the union, agreed to by Deer Grove EMS commission and that's one of the items that needs to, uh, we'll, we need to look at for approval. Um, uh, building use and security, we're going back to some changes on that. Uh, and updated policy on, um, station hygiene and pest control was approved as presented. Uh, our next meeting is on, uh, December sixteenth, so we do have two items here to approve the collective bargaining agreement and also to, uh, look at a resi- resolution, uh, twenty twenty-one eleven dash eighteen records retention, which we also, um, looked at as, on a committee, commission level and, and approved, but we needed to go back to the communities for that. Did I cover everything okay, Sarah and Chief, or am I doing my standard, uh, leaving things out here?
Oh, you got extra detail today, so very good. Thank you, sir.
Yep, thanks, Troy.
All right, with, with that, um, any general questions for Troy, Sarah or Chief? Otherwise, we'll move right to discuss and consider the approving the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five collective bargaining agreement, which was approved by both the union and the commission. Um, we probably bought it before a little bit as it's progressed, uh, through its journey to this point. Any questions or comments, uh, regarding that?
I'll make the motion to approve the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five collective bargaining agreement as presented.
Second.
Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Melissa. Uh, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Uh, next up then is to discuss and consider approving the resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven dash eighteen regarding records retention.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven dash eighteen regarding records retention as presented.
Second.
Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, David. Uh, any further discussion? All right, having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries.
On behalf of the department and the union, let's thank you all for your votes tonight. So y'all have a good night. I, I, I think I'm done for the night. I'm not sure. I'll look at the agenda just to double check.
We always appreciate you having around.
Um, John, just to let you know, Fred from Marco is, is on now.
All right, good timing. All right, um, we will turn it over to Marco Technologies, uh, and Fred, and thanks, JJ.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I am Fred with Marco. Uh, there were some questions about the managed IT proposal that, uh, we put in front of the, the group.
Uh, yes, uh, we can, we can, if you wanna turn it right over to the board to, to ask their questions, we can do that.
Well, I can go through a, just a quick sum, uh, I guess summary of, of Marco and for maybe the folks that were not aware of our company.
Okay, that would be great, Fred. Thank you.
Yeah, so we are a technology provider in the, um, Madison area, uh, actually throughout the state of Wisconsin. We've got six offices throughout the, the state and then about fifty offices throughout the upper Midwest. Um, we focus on technology, um, all the way from voice, data, video and print. Um, is, and then those buckets fall into managed services, uh, such as phone systems, uh, managed IT, copiers, printers, connectivity, cloud services and security. Our managed IT offering that we presented in front of you is a, is a security focused solution. Uh, within our solution, we include, uh, support for your end users' desktops and devices. Um, so it doesn't matter if they're using their cell phone or their laptop or an iPad. Uh, ours is a per user basis, not a per device basis, and so we support all those functions and facets of that solution. Uh, we also, um, provide, uh, reporting on the usage as well as feedback from a user when the user closes a ticket. There's information that's then presented to us. If the resolution wasn't completed, uh, that user has the opportunity to let us know and then we can reescalate or if the resolution wasn't satisfactory, we can reopen the ticket, make sure we can correct that and take care of that. So that's very important to our, our solution. Um, like I said, we, we also include support for security enhancements for desktop monitoring, server monitoring and all of the applications that may need to be supported, so. Kind of a little bit about Marco and, and our offering, then I can turn it over to the board for more questions.
All right, thanks, Fred. Um, any question from board members?
Fred, this is David Peterson, um, one of the trustees. Uh, I also work at Microsoft, so, um, they make me say that, so. Um, regarding your offering, um, tell me about kind of the hardware, like, so, so we do have, you know, uh, assets, right, server assets, that sort of thing, firewalls. Um, when it comes to, uh, a new customer, do you typically, uh, do you like to come in and, and, and use your own hardware? Do you use what's there? Kind of what, what's the process there?
So more than that, we use what's currently in place because there's, you know, would be a typical, uh, a lot of, you know, upfront cost if we had to replace everything. So we do an assessment, uh, what we include is a, basically a, uh, an onboarding process where an engineer and a group of team members, uh, review what you have for technology, uh, take an inventory of it, a little life cycle of it. Is it industry standard? Is it, you know, how is it being used, best practices? What's the support on it? Um, and then from there, uh, we take an, uh, uh, an inventory and then feedback from our engineers as to, yes, this is something that's, you know, your firewall is, is out of support and there's no longer support on it. We would make recommendations to replace that. Um, because obviously that's a liability and we would, you know, if you don't have the time or don't have the finances to do it at this time, we would just make a note of that in your schedule E, uh, that, hey, this is something that the village should consider replacing as soon as they can, but we will continue to support what they have. If something goes wrong with it, we'll make best effort to resolve the issue and, and move forward. But most of our, ours is going to support what you currently have. Um, you know, we, we've understand that, you know, going through an audit of Windows machines or maybe a few Windows machines out there that may need to be updated or out of support, we would just make best, our best efforts to support those machines and then, uh, from there we'd, uh, do our best to get those replaced as soon as you can.
Okay. Um, can you kind of describe for me, uh, kind of your, your training? Um, and I'll give you an example, right? So, um, you know, we do license Office three sixty-five, right, but the staff doesn't necessarily, it's kind of hit or miss as to who uses it, right? Where they, the staff does make heavy use, usage of, uh, file shares. Is there something like, do, do you try to be proactive in your training and like, you know, for staff, for example, right, they, they heavily leverage network shares, but they could be, they might find some efficiencies leveraging OneDrive or SharePoint or, or Teams for that matter. Um, is there some, like, do you guys typically try to be proactive in training or is it based on an, as an ad needed, on an on-needed basis?
Um, I would say it's more of an on-needed basis. Uh, we, we do contract, let's say for SharePoint, for instance, we, we don't have, uh, a training personnel that goes through SharePoint. We use SharePoint internally and we have SharePoint stat- or SharePoint experts on staff, but we don't, uh, hire them out for our customers. If you're looking for some Share- SharePoint like, um, knowledge or, um, expertise or just consulting, we typically use a, uh, another party that we've worked with in the past that would help us with that scenario.
Okay, but it, but in terms of proact- you, you're not necessarily proactive, right? It's, it's just based on what?
Yep, it's just based on what users need, yeah, at the time, yeah. There's calls and questions on, hey, how do I access OneDrive or how do I use Teams? Yeah, those, our, our staff will be more than knowledgeable on it. We do have a few videos on like Teams, for instance, that we've generated, um, since we're a heavy Teams shop ourselves, um, that we've generated and we shared with our customers on diff- different tricks and pointers to navigate Teams, especially with sending files and opening files that we have shared with our customers. But I wouldn't say there's any type of formal onboarding training for a user that we would provide.
Okay, okay. Um, regarding Office three sixty-five, you guys, do you have any, like, are you a Microsoft Gold partner? Are you kind of, what are your?
Yes, we are a CMS partner, so we, uh, resell licenses, uh, you know, and, and then if, you know, the difference between buying them from Microsoft and buying from us, we can do the monthly and subscriptions and bill a credit card and we don't turn users off if they buy them, you know. Let's say they, the credit card number changes or they don't pay the bill, we're not gonna shut them off, we're gonna keep them going and, and that sort of thing. So yes, we are a Microsoft partner.
As far as, as far as reselling licenses, do you, do you try to stick with Microsoft or are you kind of a full service shop in, in terms of reselling?
We're a full service shop, so.
Um, and the last question is around change management, so it's specifically around like communication?
Hmm.
If you're going to make a big change, let's say like a single sign on change or you're gonna make, you know, invent, you know, insert your big monstrous change here, right? Um, can you kind of give me a flavor for what your communication strategies look like?
So typically if it's a, uh, something that maybe is geared towards a project, uh, we would have a project coordinator, uh, running that project with the village and communication would flow through that project coordinator. Um, there'd be information then that would be sent out. Uh, we use either a smart sheet or a Google Doc to make sure we disseminate that information between the group. Everyone's on the same page, what's going on with the project. Um, and then the lead engineer technician would be in communication. Um, we schedule a time for that change, that's change is, is set in place. Uh, and then we have usually a call maybe a few days or prior to this, depending on the, on the size of the project, there may be multiple calls during leading up to the project and then we have a, a scheduled time for the change. And then, uh, project coordinator and technician would be on the call, making those changes and then after the whack, there would be a follow-up with the customer the next morning to make sure everything's running and, and, and performing like it should be.
Okay, and then last question, um, I do notice, so you, you guys are based in St. Cloud. Um, can you?
That's our corporate office, yep.
Can you comment on the local, uh, presence? Like, if, if there's need for hands-on, I think you're ba- I think you're local, right?
I am, I'm on a, actually I live, uh, south of Rona, but, uh, our office is in Middleton. Uh, we have three technicians in that office. Uh, we have an office in Milwaukee and office in Appleton, office in La Crosse, op- office in Wausau, so. Uh, I would say, you know, we have three technicians in Madison. Our next closest is Milwaukee. I think there's two techs there. And then Appleton has a large, that's a kind of a hub for us in the state of Wisconsin. That would be about five or six technicians, data technicians in that office, so yes.
So getting hands-on is not a, not a problem?
No, not a problem, no.
Awesome. Thank you Fred, that's all for me.
Thank you, thank you David.
Other questions from board members? Fred, I have one. This is John. What do you do around a security training? What do you offer? Particularly for phishing and the like, again, it seems to be a means of a lot of the bad actors get, get into organizations and, you know, you're only as strong as your weakest link. And the user, you know, knowledge of not clicking on the link you shouldn't click on is prevalent in a lot of organizations.
Yeah, absolutely. So we use a, a software package called Know Before. It's included within our offering. This is a campaign, as you would, that would be kicked off for your end users for training. It's a short video. I don't know if you're familiar with it or not. I see some nodding heads, some maybe not. But it then kicks off a campaign. It can be utilized for training purposes as well as educational purposes as we move forward. Yeah, it also has a, I'm sorry, it also has a link in your email. You suspect something that's phishing. You can click on that link. It will then report it back to our team that can investigate it and get back to you as well.
Super. Any other questions again from board members or Fred? All right, thanks Fred for, for jumping on and we appreciate you letting us know a little bit more Marco and stuff. Good evening.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your time this evening and appreciate the time.
All right, with that, we're going to jump back into Village Board Commissions and Committees reports. And I think we left off at Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee and that would be Sarah.
Yes, thank you. All right, so we met the Monday before Thanksgiving, the twenty-second. And we reviewed the survey that was sent out to committee members. A lot of really great feedback and no real clear next steps. So we're going to see what some other communities do. We have information on what the county does. But we're going to get a little more information if there are any other municipalities or places we can look to see what they're doing. And then we also spent the rest of our meeting talking about the student representative and having a youth member. And we're very supportive of that. So that was, that was our meeting.
All right, any questions for Sarah? All right, thanks Sarah. Then we'll move right down to Law Enforcement Committee. And I'll take a stab at this and then see if Sarah, Troy or Chief or Lieutenant have anything else to add. We met on the twenty-third of November. Much of the updates there were on the ongoing recruitment efforts for officers. Again, assuming that the, the budget was approved, which was this evening for two officers next year. As of that date, the following day, there were going to be some oral interviews. Or actually there were that date, I think on the twenty-third. They had Chief relayed that there were seven, eight good candidates, over thirty, thirty-one that applied moved through that list. On the first of December, the Police Commission was supposed to have further interviews, which occurred. And then hoping that at least one of the hires will be a certified officer. Perhaps two based on this, the candidate pool, but at least one. And if, and if we do have another one that isn't certified, then they would go through the academy. It would just be a little longer before we would see them available and, and on duty. So that actually progresses as we speak. The other big thing that Chief shared was the pilot for the license plate readers was just getting up and running then. At that point, I think there was only a day or so that they were up and running and no stolen vehicles were, were known at that point. Chief may have other updates from that. There was just to mention a little bit on the SR report, the format changed a little bit. Talked a little bit about one of the challenging incidences there. Again, emphasize the stolen vehicles, the break-in vehicles. And that was still, is still ongoing and for folks to lock their vehicle, lock their vehicles up. To ensure that, you know, you, you become a party to do that. And they continue to rotate around communities in Dane County, so part of the reason for the plate readers. If a stolen car does come in to the village. Anything else I missed Sarah or Troy or Chief or Lieutenant? I'm thinking silence is, I did okay.
Well, Chief's down in sunny Florida, so more likely. Just to update on the two topics that you had spoke about. We do have two conditional offers of employment out that were received and accepted. And both of them are, or actually one of them is certified. And then the other one will be certified in eleven days as they graduate. So if everything goes well with the background checks and the rest of the process, we lucked out and we should have two certified officers come after the first of the year, so. And then as it pertains to the LPRs, the LPRs are working phenomenal. I know the officers have been getting read backs. We have had some vehicles in the village that officers have been able to go over and apprehend suspects or at least get information on times and dates to help other municipalities with their ongoing investigation into those stolen vehicles. And then last but not least, we just have this week, the Police Commission will meet again to interview candidates for the sergeant's position, which will again start after the first of the year. So we're moving along and like I said, just updating the updates that John brought to the board.
All right, any questions for Lieutenant?
I did have one.
We'll start with Melissa and then jump to Troy.
Thanks Troy, thanks John. I was just wondering how many other communities in Dane County have the license plate readers?
The stationary ones that we have, we are the pilot program, so we are the first. But there are other municipalities in Dane County that do have the license plate readers, which are attached to the squad cars. Sun Prairie, Fitchburg and a few in the city of Madison do have those LPRs that have been up and running for five to ten years already.
Thank you.
My question is also about the LPRs. Specifically, how many arrests have been made with the assistance of those? And how many other communities, how many, I don't want to say how many other communities. How many other folks have we helped apprehend because of those? I'm looking for something measurable to make sure that they're worth the investment as we move forward. I guess is where I'm going with that.
I can't give you the exact number Troy. All I know is like the data. The detective, they meets with the stolen auto task force every Tuesday. And unfortunately with the amount of stolen cars, there are the updates are not always completely up to date in the NCIC system. So they're able to do queries on, you know, if a vehicle was in the village in the past. Ever since the cameras are up and they can kind of help build cases when it comes to timelines and, and areas that they've been in. So I mean, to give you a hard fact number, I can't say that we've, you know, we've arrested, you know, two subjects due to the LPR. They've just been mainly assisting right now with the data gathering and then getting our officers closer to that area. Once something does enter. For an example, I know we had one of the stolen autos from I believe Sun Prairie that entered down by the interstate. And then by the time the officer got down towards QuickTrip, the LPR had read that they had then left the village, headed back towards Sun Prairie. So, you know, it's, it's live data. It's, it's happening within seconds of them coming into the village, so. But, but I, like I said, I can't give you a hard number on, on arrest at this moment.
And I appreciate that. I, I think that's, that's really good information to help justify the investment we're looking at making on this and, you know, moving forward, hopefully we'll get more data to support that.
Yeah, and I know the goal here too is, you know, as the pilot program being in the village, you know, the, the flock system that we're using is also getting out to the other municipalities. And there are going to be other municipalities very soon that are going to also be putting up cameras. So, you know, the more cameras that we have up in Dane County, the better the data is going to be. And the better the system as a whole will be, because multiple municipalities will, will be together sharing that data.
No, that, that's awesome. I'm, I'm really concerned about, you know, what we're, we're achieving in the village of Cottage Grove, obviously, because that's where we live.
All right. Go ahead.
One more thing. I was just wondering, how did we end up getting to be the pilot community for this, for the LPRs?
So the flock system itself is predominantly over in the Milwaukee County, Waukesha County area. Chief Labor is from the Milwaukee County, Waukesha County area. So I believe he's got friends and contacts in the law enforcement field over there that kind of put him in contact with flock themselves. So just through professional contacts is kind of how we got in contact with them. And, you know, like they said, the rest is history from there, so.
Great, thanks.
All right, we'll move on to NAVIG, landfill monitoring. David or Paul?
I can take that. We met Monday, the twenty-ninth. It was about a five-minute meeting. We approved the bills for September and October. There was some discussion again around the methane levels. They're still good, stable in all our probes. And I think it's the new, new vertical vents that were recently installed, you know, continue to prove to be the right move. And our next meeting is scheduled on Monday, January twenty-fourth. David, missing anything?
Five-minute meeting? It was quick.
Yep.
All right, we'll move on then to joint fire. There is a discuss and consider here. Go over to David or Melissa or Paul, so I don't know. Draw straws or whatever.
I will, I, I think I got the short straws. I'll go ahead. If, so I'll just go through the agenda and then we'll hit the discuss and consider. With the Chief's report, we're at thirty-seven members, which is one driver operator, eight officers, eight probationary members and twenty full firefighters. We've had three hundred and thirteen calls so far this year, which is the highest amount ever in one year. In twenty-twenty, there were two hundred and seventy total. So the problem though is that about twenty-five percent of our calls are canceled, which is high. And we don't know how to avoid it at this point. With the, one of the issues is people call nine-one-one on the interstate. They see a car smoking or pulled off to the side of the road, they call nine-one-one. So our fire trucks get started out there and then by then the trooper has gotten to that spot and there's no vehicle there. So they're canceled. So that's one of the issues. There is also incidents where they're called to help for neighbor disputes with Deer Grove EMS. Neighbor disputes or for Deer Grove EMS lift assists and carry of patients too sometimes. The ultra-high pressure that was purchased with the help of funds from the Fire Festival helps to reduce water usage and puts fires out faster. They recently got that and were able to use it right away. Lastly, engine three brakes were replaced for a reasonable rate. And engine three will undergo another DOT inspection so that when we sell it, it has a passing grade. Because it had previously gone, had a DOT inspection, but it failed due to the brakes. And we're selling that once their, that vehicle is replaced next year. Where the attorneys are still drafting the consolidated fire agreement. We heard about the PAA Future Need Study and the with the Deer Grove EMS Commission update. And then the, we, I'll skip over the next item, but come back to it. We discussed the use of ARPA funds for radio replacements and we had applied for, Cottage Grove Fire had applied for an AFG grant to replace the radios along with Deer Grove EMS and other municipalities and entities by us throughout Dane County. And we did not get that grant. But the radios that we currently have are basically obsolete. They can't find replacement parts for them and not every one of our firefighters has a radio. So when they go into a building where there, there's a fire or could be a fire, the team has one radio between the two of them. So if something were to happen to one of the firefighters and the other one has a radio, like it's, it's kind of an urgent situation that if we don't, they're, they're going to apply for another grant for the AFG grant again that is open until mid-December. And they're going to reach out to, like, to get letters from our representatives to help hopefully make our grant application more appealing. But what we're looking at is thirteen mobile radios that would stay in the fire trucks that cost a little over thirty-seven thousand dollars. And also forty portable radios so that every firefighter would have one on their person, which is about seventy-eight thousand dollars. And that's for the fire department. EMS also needs new radios and their cost I think is about ninety-three thousand, but that's separate. So that if we, if they don't get the grant in twenty-twenty-two, that's definitely going to be in the budget for twenty-twenty-three. And I think David and Paul were interested in having a larger conversation regarding that, regarding the radios and funding for them. And I don't, how do we leave that, David and Paul? That we are going to have Chief here maybe in the next couple meetings or something?
Yeah, I think it was to do with similar presentation in terms of what he shared. I think you actually articulated it well, you know, all the radios that they're looking at. But we'd push it a little bit to find that, you know, it does sound like it is a safety and risk issue. And that's a certain, something we want to compromise. I think it's something that needs to be done. Talking two hundred and seven, two hundred and seven, two hundred and eight thousand, thousand dollars, but it sounds like there's an absolute need.
And just one, sorry Melissa.
No, I think we're going to say the same thing because I saw you and reminded me of it. Maybe, we'll see. You can, you can follow up. What I was just going to say was that basically we decided that the village can't really use the ARPA funds for that. And the town is still looking into whether they can. Um, and the town uh is still looking into whether they can. Use ARPA funds or not for that, but because we can't necessarily use ARPA funds, we'd have to look at other funding for. Um, replacing the radios. Is that what you're going to say, Matt?
For the most part, yes. I mean, it would be a, it would be a perfect use for ARPA funds. I mean, if you if you have. Grant funding that could go towards um something and you're and we're trying to find um. What are the best ways to or or what projects or expenditures we should put ARPA funds towards? Um, uh, obviously a need that's on the horizon that we're. Going to be spending the money on regardless, it would be great to use um any grant dollars for that type of expenditure. But unfortunately, um, we had this reviewed by Baker Tilly and the village does not qualify to use ARPA funds for this. For this purpose, so they've, um, and I I shared that with the with the board, so you guys are aware of that already, but it's, um. They they don't see any any way around that. It's it's mainly due because the. A a good thing for the village in twenty-twenty, we did not have a revenue. Um, we did not have a deficit in our budget, so if we did, then we would have had more flexibility with the use of our ARPA funds. But um, because we didn't, we're we're pretty much restricted to water projects, sewer projects, storm sewer projects or broad broadband. There there's a few exceptions to that, but not not to the extent of being able to use uh the money for these radios, so. Yeah, and I I had heard at Deer Grove EMS that uh Chi- Chief Lang was. Uh, he he maybe had some ideas and he he's been looped in with Baker Tilly as well, so he he may make another. Uh, case for it and we'll we'll certainly have that re-reviewed by Baker Tilly, but it doesn't look promising from from that standpoint.
David or Melissa, I know they were talking, was it the AFG grant that they were going to rewrite for?
Yeah.
And we asked the timeline on that. I can't recall. Was it sometime in Q-two that they would get some kind of response to that, like in June or July?
Yeah, in the summer, it seems to be when they get the response out. Even though the they apply for it, like it's due like December fifteenth, I think. But they, we don't find out whether we get approved until months later.
He did say they didn't find out until November, December timeframe for this year. So it. It. I I do remember him, we asked him, we said, hey, you know, like, why are you coming to us for for this now, right? We're in the throes of budget season and, you know. They had hoped that they were going to get the grant this year. They didn't. They're going to reapply for next year. But it was like, hey, just so you're aware, this is a problem. It's a crisis. We need these. I still want to talk to the chief myself just to get an understanding of. Wh- what is a priority in the budget and what isn't, right? Because it's it's hard, again, I'm not on the fire department, so I can't speak to what is a priority and what isn't. And and just get a a little bit better stack rank as to what what is a crisis, because, you know, Paul, I definitely, I I could tell in your face, right? Like, when he communicated to us how big of an issue this was, that did not surface itself in the budget and to, I mean. It's a problem, right? He knows it is and they and they're dealing the best they can, but I think for for myself at least, it's like. Let's let's solve this problem, right? Let's not, let's let's solve the, let's not just treat the symptoms, let's treat the disease, right? And I think we just need to find a a way to to help the the fire department, because they need these radios. I mean, the. Painted a very good horror story, good in in not a good way.
Yeah, I think we mentioned that too, David. Like, when we're moving forward, we're presenting a capital line line item budget, you know, there's got to be some form of prioritization. You know, and safety and risk has got to be at the top, right?
Yep.
Had we known that, I I think this would have been, you know, more urgent conversation, so, but now it is.
Yep.
I I I guess, just so I understand fully, and and this goes for EMS and and I'm on Deer Grove EMS Commission, I haven't asked the questions, this is on me, but uh. Um, why is it we could communicate good two years ago, but we can't communicate now well without these new radios?
Because we couldn't two years ago. These radios were, and again, we got a little bit of a history lesson around the the county. You know, about ten, twelve years ago, when we switched to to the digital and the the radios that were chosen were, you know, almost outdated from from the get-go. Um, you know, and so municipalities did what they could, you know, when that change was made. Um, now those radios are getting very, very old and have not been routinely, you know, there. There isn't a subsection of the the fleet of radios that's changed over regularly, right? And so this is a. You know, it it's a problem, right? And and for the last three years, both chiefs have tried to go for the grant and have failed to get the grant. But this will be the third year, I should say, so the last two years they've tried. Um, you know, and I, rather than just trying to get the grant, I think we should still go for the grant, but. This is a, this is a problem, right? These are outdated outdated radios and each fire team only has one radio to share amongst two people. Again, I'm not, I'm I'm not a layperson, but that that sounds like a recipe for disaster, in my opinion.
Yeah, it 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 really sounds like poor planning by both, uh.
I agree.
You know, you know, both uh joint fire and and EMS, if if we purchased ten years ago outdated equipment. And and we've been nursing it long, which is awesome, we're able to nurse a lung and nobody's been hurt, but. I'm not sure why it hasn't been on the capital budget, you know, side of things long ago, not just all of a sudden a crisis today.
Yep, I mean, I, we've, I've now given Nick that feedback maybe three times now. That, like, we, you know, Melissa, Paul and I and Sarah sometimes, like, we can't go and lobby for you if we don't know what a priority is, right? Like, I'm not a fireman, I can't speak, like, unless you educate me, I can't speak on your behalf, right? And so you just, you give me a capital budget, I then give you what you ask for, right? If you if you reformulate that, put it in a stack rank and say, David, this this, these top three, three things, if we don't get this, somebody gets hurt. That changes the conversation entirely. Right? And and that's what I keep asking, you know, Nick for is like, help me tell a better story. Right? Like, if if I don't know the full story, that, kind of like your dad, right? Like, I'll cut a bath for you, but like, I can only do it if you tell me what's what the what a problem is, right?
Right.
Um, and and so Nick and I will sit down here soon and and walk me through the budget and walk me through what's a crisis, because, you know. And again, I'm I'm new here, right? Like, something is always broke on a fire department, right? It's like, okay. Uh, but, you know, there, some things can be, are okay to be kind of broken, some things are really broke, right? And and, you know, the the ladder truck is another really good example, right? Like, that that needed to be fixed and and they kind of stressed about how to get that fixed. It's like, if you need something, we need to, we need to know the whole story, right? And the radios are just, again, symptomatic of a bigger issue.
Yeah, help me help you.
Yep, hundred percent.
Um, so I guess that's, we'll we'll talk about that more in the coming um meetings. Two last things on our agenda were, um, the, there has been a false alarm issue at Hydrate Chemical. In the past few months, there's been six false alarms. At Hydrate and we have a village ordinance that states a citation shall be issued when there are three false alarms by the same entity in a sixty-day period, which. We, there's never been citations given, so chief just wanted to make sure. We knew what was going on and uh make sure he was doing what he was supposed to, so. Um, Hydrate will be getting an order for compliance sent to them. They, Hydrate had the same issue last year, um, and the year before, so it's kind of been an issue. It seems to happen around the same timeframe too. So hopefully they can get that rectified, so our our, we're not having false alarms um there. And lastly, oh, go ahead.
I I just have a question on that. So is it a a fire alarm that goes off or are some other type of alarm?
I think it's some other type of alarm where, like, something that. Because it, they indicated it seems to be when the hydrants are being flushed is when they tend to have the false alarm. So whatever that means to Hydrate Chemical. And whatever type of alarms they have. Unless David or Paul, if you know specifically.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good, that's a good question. I don't, I don't think we asked that. Hundred percent sure exactly what kind of alarm we're talking about. It could be a panic alarm. I I don't know, you know.
But we're able to confirm that it's it's false and it's not.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it, there was. It happened twice in one day, five hours apart too. Uh, JJ, do you have more to add?
Uh, I'll just say I can reach out too, and if it is happening uh as a result of our hydrant flushing, I know years past that's been an issue. It might just be a matter of us communicating better with them or them communicating with us exactly. I know you can put these systems in test mode. So maybe it's just, if it is all hydrant flushing, which I would think if they're getting a notice on it, I would have heard a little more about this, but um. It is something where I think we can work together and put it in test mode, because when you fluctuate the pressure, um, a lot of times it does set off these type of uh alarms. They've got certain parameters set and when the pressure fluctuates, even if it's for a split second, those are designed to to call out there's some issue with the their fire suppression system, so. Um, if that's it, maybe it's something that can be taken care of relatively simply, but might involve a little coordination and a little work.
I wonder if you need to connect with Nick then, because he's drafting up a letter, basically telling him, like, listen, get this fixed or, you know, you're going to get citation.
Yep, I will shoot off an email right now and see if I touch base with him soon.
Why are we choosing not to issue a citation up to this point if it's an ongoing issue? These funds could be used for joint fire, basically.
Because the fire chief didn't believe he had the power to write a citation.
Yeah, it's a little confusing where that lies. I mean, I don't even know, I don't, we don't even know what the dollar amount is, right?
Well, I I went and read the uh the ordinance, I pulled it up, and we can, you can write up to a five-hundred-dollar uh fine. And the the fire inspector has the power to write uh a ticket.
That's right.
Citation, and the fire inspector reports to Nick.
That's right, you're right. Thanks, thanks for the reminder, David.
No, I I get it. It just, it just, an ongoing issue like this and we've got things in place. It hasn't been rectified and, you know, uh, as little as five-hundred-dollar sounds, that could help pay for. A tenth of a radio.
We hear you.
Um.
Seems like there's more seriousness around it right now after that last conversation we had.
Yeah. Um, lastly, we'll go back to the uh survey bill for the emergency services building sign. Um, this was done back in February. Um, the survey, um, if you remember, the fire department got a grant to replace their emergency services building sign. And the the fire station is in the town, so they had to go through Dane County zoning. And Dane County zoning for the sign because it wasn't just replacing their old one, it was updating it and going a little bit bigger. Um, the Dane County zoning required a survey, land survey before it was placed and then a land survey afterwards to make sure it was in the right spot. And uh the bill was twelve hundred dollars. The bill came in September thirtieth, which was after the. Uh, previous fire, joint fire committee. Um, and it was after the funds from the emergency service building had already been approved for other items. So that's why it is before us this evening to um consider paying the villages. Half of the survey bill for six hundred dollars for the fire station sign.
I'll make a motion to approve paying six hundred dollars for the village portion of the Barron Cut, Ben, some surveying bill in the amount of. Twelve hundred dollars for the EMS fire station sign.
Second.
All right, thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Paul. Uh, any further, any, excuse me, any further discussion? All right, having heard none, all those in favor then?
Um, hi.
Hi. Anybody oppose? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right, um, Melissa, anything else or?
All good, thanks.
Okay, I knew you saved the best for last, for the last thing. Um, then we'll move right on to the ad hoc housing task force, and this is uh David and Paul.
I can start off, David, if there's anything I'm missing, jump in. Uh, we met on Wednesday, December second. Uh, it was a small group working session. Um, to discuss some uh public participation options. Uh, but prior to that, um, Aaron and the staff, um, yeah, I think with some of the work group. Participants met with Olivia Perry to prepare an outline uh for potential public participation. Um, and from that, we talked about creating a one-page fact sheet. Compiling highlights of research and overview housing elements along with uh the backside of that fact sheet, um, having some components to. Or elements of the comprehensive plan. Uh, we felt, uh, you know, that was something good to move forward with. Uh, we will be presenting that. And Aaron, if I'm speaking out of term, I think we're planning on presenting that tomorrow. Uh, at our um larger group housing task uh committee. Um, and then I think from that, we would like to put it in front of three to five of the committees. Um, just to get their way and feedback. From that point, uh, we talked about potentially putting the fact sheet, the comprehensive, elements of the comprehensive plan on the website, maybe Facebook. And then last, we talked about uh public input. Um, we talked about surveys and individual um interviews or small group focus. I think that group is leaning more towards having in-person uh small group, um, small groups coming in to have just a a more conversation around that versus uh. You know, putting out a survey. David, Aaron, missing anything?
Yeah, I think we called it office hours.
Office hours, that's right.
I just, I would, after the library co- committee survey, I would just like to avoid surveys at all costs.
And I support, I supported that too. Um, I just think if we get, if we have the opportunity and you have the capacity and have the ability to schedule office meetings. You know, um. Can't hide behind a survey, you know, have the opportunity to really have some conversation, you know, and uh round it and uh some transparency, just be an open. Conversation, I think was good. I think it was a good suggestion.
David, I didn't hear what you said. You said after the library committee survey, something, but I didn't catch it.
I would just like to avoid surveys.
Avoid surveys, got it.
Because there are a lot of work?
That and everybody who sells the survey methods as expert. This is a, I'll just be honest, I mean, it's a highly volatile conversation, right? Um, we've all heard, we've all had feedback uh on the current housing, multifamily housing in the village, and I I feel like office, if we. You know, if Aaron and I did a lot of office hours and we put, spread them throughout a month or so. Um, and take, you know, individual emails and phone calls, happy to take feedback, uh, but I'd rather do it. From a a qualitative perspective rather than a quantitative perspective.
Aaron, missing anything?
I think so. We'll see what the full group thinks of all that tomorrow.
Did I say that right, Aaron? Are are we just basically giving them a recap of what we talked about the other day? Or are we actually going to have some pieces of the fact sheet and comprehensive plan for that group tomorrow?
Make sure they're they're on board with that plan and then we'll bring the materials and get ready for work after that.
Perfect. That's all I had, Jen.
All right. Thank you, David and Paul. Uh, we'll move then to uh reports from village officers. What we have up here is Samford. Um, Rick, anything from you?
Nothing tonight. I just wanted to give you guys a heads up for the December twentieth meeting. We're planning on having an attorney from our office, Jane Landretti, come and speak about the opiate litigation settlement. Uh, she's been reading up on that and it's really knowledgeable on the topic, so we figured it'd be a good idea for her to come in. Uh, present to you guys on what the settlement means for the village.
All right, thanks, Rick. Um, then we'll move down to communication. This is. Then we'll move down to communication, this is business. First up is consideration of the approval of the vouchers, any questions, comments regarding the vouchers as presented?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Is there, all right, thank you Paul, thank you Melissa, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? Any abstain, motion carries. Correspondence? I believe I had anything, anything else, anything from board members?
I was just wondering, we received a message, was it the Boy Scouts that was, they were looking to hope to have?
Uh, Girl Scouts, Heidi, it was Girl Scouts, I did report, I think it was Girl Scouts.
I think it was Boy Scouts. Flynn Hall or something, I have a meeting at night, so, I mean, I would love to attend, but I don't know. I hope someone else can, I guess.
I said something up.
Oh, good, good.
I was gonna say, I'd already sent a note out just volunteering as well, after I saw it. Cause I, I know that there are, I know there's one committee meeting for sure and I know there's other commitments on that, I think it was on Thursday evening, that regularly come up. So I just said, I'm not sure if you heard it from anybody else on the board, but, you know, I'm happy to show up and answer questions or if you want something prepared. So I did throw that out to them.
Super, thanks.
I think it was Andrea, if I remember right. And again, if, happy for others to be there as well, I mean, anybody, please, if you're available, I think it's great to connect with youth. But I knew that there were, I knew there were at least a couple conflicts. And thank you, Heidi, for reminding me of that, I totally forgot about it. But it is on my calendar. So upcoming community events, just wanted to shout out to Christmas in the Grove, all of the chamber, the volunteers, the PD, all the great kids and everybody that showed up. We lucked out with a, at least for the parade, a nice evening. In the past, I think we've all, many of us have been there, it has been like frozen tundra, as one would say. But even then, the community gets out, so it's great to see that. I hadn't heard anything bad, I just heard smiling faces and a lot of kids with candy, which is always good for the parents. So anything else on upcoming community events? All right, future agenda items? Matt, anything, I know we'll have things from Plan Commission probably on our next meeting. Rick already gave us a shout out for the expert coming in for the opiate litigation.
I have had a couple of questions from residents about the kind of transportation network that's being built out in the future, like in the West Lawn extension, as Damascus goes out toward Gaston and London goes to Bus Road. And I was just wondering if we could maybe have a presentation on, like, the comp plan framework for the road network, just to get some more information out, you know, it's kind of a blank slate now. So they kind of understand what the plan is going to be, a refresher, just cause it's been a while since we've seen West Lawn fifth edition and we haven't seen sixth edition yet, but I think we'd probably have some viewers that would be interested in a brief presentation on that.
Aaron, do you have any comments on how that would work? I mean, we haven't, some of that is a little bit unknown until, I mean, we can have things in the comp plan, but if a developer, a developer may propose, you know, Humbert may propose something slightly different. I mean, what kind of, a detail on, I'm taking my guesses on timing, or I guess I don't, I wouldn't know what a presentation would look like for this.
Yeah, I mean, there's just a lot of, and I know, I don't know what it would look like either, but I'm just kind of trying to figure out how we could address some of the concerns and questions they have, even though we don't know a whole lot, we have a framework of what we'd like to see, I guess.
It might be, I mean, unless it's a lot of people with the concern, if it's just a couple people, I mean, probably reaching out to Aaron and having a discussion is probably the easiest. But, I mean, eventually Damascus will extend to Gaston, I'm not sure, you know, and then when sixth edition happens, I think that gets out to bus. But again, I'm not sure what a presentation would look like on that.
So maybe it would be better to just connect them with Aaron?
Unless Aaron has, I mean, I'm just kind of brainstorming, I'm not sure.
Okay, we can talk about it.
Is it as simple as just making sure they're aware of the, you know, comp plan as it is? I'm not sure, I'm not sure what they're questioning.
There's concerns about the volume of traffic on Damascus and not necessarily, let me think how to word this. There is a concern around the limits of ingress and egress into West Lawn and could even extend to the limit, the limited number of north-south routes through the village. On that side of town, or the village, I'm telling.
I mean, it's just a reality.
I live on Damascus, I'm well aware, like.
Yeah, although we do, I mean, there are developments that are, that will open up other north-south, you know. As developments continue to occur, it'll only improve our road network.
I guess that's why I was kind of looking for a presentation, so we can kind of just go through that. But if it's better to address on an individual basis, we can go that route.
We could maybe do, like, maybe Plan Commission would be a better venue for that as well.
I think, Heidi, just to, cause I know you and I talked about this, I think, one thing you could also, I mean, like, in terms of our presentation, it sounds like we're not gonna go that route, but I think there could be a presentation at some point and maybe we just work with Aaron and talk about, talk through this. But, you know, rekindling with the town, the possibility of opening up morning dough, or, yeah, morning and pheasant run, at least having a conversation about it.
We've tried repeatedly.
I know, I know. Just ask my wife, sometimes I don't take no for an answer. But I think the folks that are in question, right, live very close to Heidi and I and we've repeatedly talked about this, that there's a lot of concerns around the volume and the soon-to-be increase. And I, just trying to show, if there's nothing we can do about it, what kinds of education can we do? And I guess it sounds like just send them towards Aaron and the Plan Commission.
Yeah, maybe Aaron, based on the comments you hear, maybe there's something you can, a future agenda item for Plan Commission and go from there.
And Heidi, if you wanna reach out and talk about it some more, that would be helpful too.
Okay, thanks.
Heidi, could you include me too, I'd love to be part of that conversation too.
Will do.
Other agenda, John, did you get the, about the fire EMS radios?
Yep, I jotted it down.
Cool.
It just says radios, but I know what it means. All right, with that, then I'd like to move that the village goes into closed sessions in negotiating contract services for IT managed services. The Village of Cottage Grove Village Board will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, parentheses one, parentheses E, delivering or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Troy, roll call from Lisa, please.
Ratcliffe? Ratcliffe, aye. Alan?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Vanderbelde?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
And Valencia?
Aye.
All right, we're going into closed session, thanks.